Good morning to everybody and welcome to the December the 7th Board of County Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Larry Lancaster for the invocation and introduce the speaker and the pledge.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to recommend a very good friend of mine and introduce him Reverend Rick, actually Richard, Rick affectionately McDuffie. He's Minister of Westminster Presbyterian Church, 2505 Village Drive, and he will do our invocation and followed by that we'll please stand and I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Rick, welcome and God bless you.
Before I pray, I do want to just acknowledge that this is the 7th of December and invite you to join me in just a moment of silence as we remember 2,403 American military personnel who lost their lives in service to their country 74 years ago in Hawaii. Lord, we thank you for the service of those who were killed on December 7, 1941. Like them, we serve too. We serve the county of Cumberland, but in reality, we are serving your people and by serving them, we are serving you. Give us a servant heart and attitude. Remind us that we are never more like you than when we sacrifice what we may want selfishly for the greater good. We pray that your spirit would give us wisdom beyond our own understanding and vision beyond what our eyes can perceive. We pray that goodness and kindness which comes from you alone will mark our demeanor and conversation today. Lord, I pray today for the homes and families of those who have been elected to this commission. Governmental leadership is a serious calling and it sometimes can take a toll. I pray that you will place a hedge around these commissioners and their families, that you will protect and preserve them in order that they can complete the tasks that have been set before them today to your honor and glory. Finally, Lord, remind us that we cannot rest on the laurels of our past successes and neither are we bound by yesterday's failures. It is what we do today that matters. Please forgive our sin in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please draw me a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, I would ask Representative Billy Richardson to please step forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, may I ask for a few minutes to make a special presentation?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I'm glad you granted that since this is about you. Before I begin, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege when Reverend was talking about December 7th. My godfather was on the US Nevada and was literally blown off of it and won the Navy Cross because he kept going back and pulling people out of the water that were drowning. And one day, he finally talked about it to me and he said, "This is the most amazing carnage you'd ever seen." But he said, "He said he never saw a nation come together like our nation came together after that." And maybe that's something we can learn from in this day and time. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it is indeed a privilege to be in front of what I consider the finest county commissioners in the state of North Carolina. You guys are shining examples of what cooperative government is all about. You all take your differences, work them out, do it in a lady and gentlemanly fashion. You work with the other members of government in this county very, very well and you served the citizens of this community as well or better than any group I've ever seen, and I commend you for that. And I think in what I'm about to do today, having said that, is a direct, direct example of what a good chairman does. And Chairman Edge is about to transition and it would only be fitting that the state of North Carolina recognized such an outstanding man for years and years of service to this community and to this state. And because of that, two governors have charged me with doing this job today. Governor Kroy has signed a proclamation awarding you the highest honor you can give a citizen of the state of North Carolina. And what's significant about this order or about this award is it's not an award for one thing, Mr. Chairman. It's an award for years and years of dedicated service to the community you live in in the state of North Carolina. It's the Order of the Longleaf Pine and you've been awarded that. There's another governor, former governor, that has charged me with telling you that he feels personally responsible for your career and he said to tell you heartfelt congratulations on an excellent job well done, and that's Governor Hunt. So today, I had the privilege of recognizing Chairman Edge's lifelong service to this community. Helen Keller once said, "I long to accomplish a great and noble task, but it is my duty to accomplish small tasks if it's as if they were great and noble." Chairman Edge, we are here today to give you the Longleaf Pine. It is not an award for one moment. It is an award that is rarely awarded, but it's awarded to those who essentially made it their life's mission and their life's work to serve others in their community. And what a life of accomplishment it is. Browning once said, "Visualize yourself standing before a gateway on a hilltop." Your entire life lies out there before you and above you or below you. Before you stop through and pass, review the past, the learning, the joys, the victories, and the sorrows, everything it took to bring you here. Your life is a glowing example of service to others. It is an example of what it's like to be a defender and an ardent advocate for education. Your life is an example of what it's to be a committed father and a committed husband and personally, a committed friend. But more than anything, it is a playbook on how to build consensus and be a part of something bigger than yourself. Yours is a career marked by a commission that worked together rather than divided under your leadership. But when I look back at your life, the main accomplishment I see is I see an accomplishment as a teacher. Your whole life is an example of what a good teacher is. Life's great men remind us all that we can make our lives sublime and departing and leave behind footprints in the same time. As Tennyson said, "You have left footprints that are huge to fill." And the best of all, and I leave with this, years ago, this community was faced with a crisis and that crisis was we were bulging at the seams with schoolchildren that had no room to go and be educated. And you chaired a bond referendum and it was a huge bond referendum. The county's commitment to that bond referendum was $90 million in today's dollars, that's over $130 million. The state matching part of that was another $100 million. Through that, Representative Glazer wanted me to remind you that when you're thinking of your career, you built eight schools, 15 additions, 65 renovations, and did it $10 million under budget, which allowed us to build an additional school. Now, if that isn't political courage and vision and leadership, I don't know what is. So, Mr. Chairman, it is my privilege and honor, if I may approach, to present you on behalf of Governor Kroy, the greatest honor we can give a citizen, the Order of the Longleaf Pine.
This was a complete surprise, but I sort of became a little suspicious when I saw a couple of my grandchildren, my daughter walk in and my sister-in-law and her husband and a few of my longtime friends that have helped me in many campaigns and it is most appreciated and I will try to always keep Cumberland County in the right spirit. We, we do work hard and every member that I have served with on this board since I have been elected has a special place for me in my heart. With that, I'm going to try to move into what has become customary of describing our past year, mentioning some of the highlights in this past year that this board accomplished, not me, but this board. Last year, when I assumed the chairmanship, I stated that our number one goal as commissioners was to provide county employees with a pay increase. We were able to do that with the 3% cost of living raise in the 2016 budget. It was the first pay increase in three years for our county employees. I want to take a few minutes to highlight some of other accomplishments over the last year as part of our strategic goal to ensure a safe and healthy community by providing needed services to our citizens. Our new crime lab opened in June jointly funded by the county and the city. Our detention center started a critical time intervention post booking diversion program in partnerships with Alliance Behavioral Healthcare. The program is funded by a state grant and conducts reentry planning and case management with eligible detainees who have psychotic and other serious behavioral health disorders. We strengthened our animal control ordinance by increasing the fine charge to pet owners whose dogs bite individuals who as a result require medical treatment. We also expanded our ordinance regarding weapons on county property to include prohibiting open carry of firearms. The city and county approved funding for a joint 911 call center feasibility study to look at co-locating and/or consolidating our communication center. We identified homelessness as a priority and the commissioners approved an interlocal agreement last month for a joint homeless initiative with the city to include funding two positions, a homelessness coordinator and a data and evaluation analyst. The city will be discussing the interlocal agreement in January. We made several advances in improving our infrastructure. A detailed capital improvement plan was included in the 2016 budget and finance and engineering staff. The finance and engineering staff are exploring financial financing options to fund three year CIP items for parking lots, roofs, and building exteriors. We continue to advance our technology capabilities. The register of deeds office now offers instant land records recording. We have free Wi-Fi in the courthouse. We are converting to electronic records and an enterprise resource planning software system for finance, payroll, and human resources. We have several public utilities projects moving forward. Construction has been completed on the Bullard Circle Water Project and our public utility section is going through the punch list before the system goes online. We have received USDA funding for the Bragg Estates Sewer Project and a community meeting was held December the 1st to keep citizens informed. We approved Kansas City Sausages Company request to connect a sausage production plant near the Cumberland County line in Sampson County to the Norcrest Sewer Division. Once completed, the plan is expected to create 177 jobs. We laid the groundwork this year for changing how we handle economic development. We entered into an interlocal agreement with the city to establish a new economic development board and the members have been appointed. We are eagerly moving forward under the new structure. I began by talking about our employees and I want to end there. We recognize the importance of our employees' health, not only for them as individuals, but also for our entire organization. This year, we restructured our employee wellness services program and contracted with a vendor to run our employee clinic, which reopened in June. During the budget process, County Manager Amy Cannon outlined a business intelligence initiative designed to look for efficiencies in our business practices in order to work smarter and more cost effectively with the goal of providing better customer service. I have already seen this in action. The county's mailroom moved from the courthouse to the print shop in the building maintenance facility and they combined operations into the newly formed print, mail, and design services. I expect we will hear more success stories in 2016 as our business analysts review our processes and recommend changes. As has already been alluded to, today, I'm announcing that I will not be filing for reelection in 2016. I want to sincerely thank the citizens of Cumberland County for electing me to serve 16 years as a Cumberland County Commissioner and six years as a Cumberland County School Board Member. Serving has been an honor and a privilege. The rewards have been much greater than the challenges. Challenges will continue for those who remain in elected office and those who are elected in the future. Serving with all of you who will continue as commissioners and others on previous boards will always have a special place in my heart and I thank you for your tutelage, your patience, your kindness, and memories that we share. I would especially like to thank my wife Brenda for her support throughout the years. All of you can attest to the fact that you can't serve in this capacity without the support of your spouse as well as your family and friends. I treasure the relationships that I have developed through the years with those in elected office and the employees who work and have worked for the county. Public service both in and out of elected office will continue to be a part of my life. I hope my colleagues will consider appointing me to some board or committee after I finish my term in December of 2016. I look forward to the next adventure. And I'll remind you that although your appreciation is appreciated, that I can't do this alone. It takes an entire board to govern this county and I want you to always remember that. With that, I'm going to open the floor for the nomination of Chairman of this board for next year.
Mr. Chairman, I hesitate to follow such eloquent presentations from my representative and then from you, but I do have a gently used stylus I'm going to pass over to the new chairman. It's all I have to give him because he will be using his iPad a lot. I'd like to nominate at this time your teammate vice chair who served with you this year. I think he is prepared. You have kept him informed. He, along with you, has served in a leadership position on the school board and on this board. I personally think that we are a group of gifted and talented individuals. We are each unique in our own right and we work together very well. As you know, however, that as the years go by, and I'm sure BR and Ed sitting across from each other, wave your hands, y'all, because they both served with all of us.
Brayden's back there.
Where's Brayden? I didn't see Brayden come in. Stand up, Brayden. I didn't see you, Brayden. I'm so sorry, but we all came in together. Get up and get that water off you. But anyway, while this little drama's going on, I'm going to keep on talking. But we are gifted and talented and we do have the unusual ability to come together. We may agree, we may disagree, whatever. You don't even agree 100% of the time with whoever you happen to live with in your house and politics, you know, is a matter of give and take. But this individual has had the opportunity to do it on two different boards. I first met him whenever he became chair of the school board, the first merged school board, and I told him he was the only person that had the privilege of serving with both the husband and wife. My husband was on the school board and then he came and he had to serve with me. He said it was easier serving with my husband, but I won't tell you that. But I am, I am extremely pleased to have follow in the footsteps of our esteemed chair for the next few minutes, Kenneth Edge, the vice chair who walked along with him this year, Marsha Faircloth, and I move that we elect him by acclamation.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. We do not need to vote if it's acclamation, is that correct or do we?
As long as everyone...
The vote is by affirmation and that's been seconded, so that's...
I'll vote.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Counsel. I will be in board. I will be very brief in my remarks. You stole a little bit of my thunder because I was going to recognize all the former commissioners and we missed one. Bob Lewis, raise your hand.
That's right.
Bob's right. You can't...
I had the privilege of serving directly with BR, Brayden, and Ed. We served directly. Also feel like I served with Bob because Bob, when I was chairman of the Board of Education, Bob was chairman of the Board of Commissioners and we worked very closely together then, didn't we, Bob? So Bob is a very close friend and ally as well. Representative Rich, thank you so much for your service. We look forward to you going back to Raleigh and serving us for another two years and then another 20 after that if you're willing, sir. As we look into next year, I always like to say that if you remember back during the Gulf, the first Gulf War, it was something that we come to know as SCUD missiles. You didn't know when they were coming, you just knew they were coming. And as we look forward to 2016, we know there'll be SCUD missiles coming in and we won't know when, but there'll always be something that this board, it will take it out of its routine and put us into crisis mode, but we'll handle it because we, every year, something comes along. I don't care who you are. If you're chairman, you'll deal with it. So we know, we know it's coming and we know that this group is prepared to take whatever comes on as well as what we know is coming and we can look into every month and we know, we know some things already and we're already planning for them. Certainly, we've got the sales tax situation that we've got to deal with, with the city of Fayetteville and trust me, we will deal with that in a very professional manner. We will take care of the county's finances in the process. That will be our priority. And one remark I saw said that the county had failed to plan for this and we... comes on as well as what we know is coming, and we can look into every month, and we know, we know some things already, and we're already planning for them. Certainly, we've got the sales tax situation that we've got to deal with, with the city of Fayetteville, and trust me, we will deal with that in a very professional manner. We will take care of the county's finances in the process. That will be our priority. And one remark I saw said that the county had failed to plan for this, and we, the county manager and I took issue with that at the very meeting that it was said, and the fact, the fact is, the compromise that was made 15 years ago was a very fair and very good compromise, and the county at that time had the option of going to the Advalore